Let me say good evening. Let me say good evening to all of us on tonight. Just before we start our meeting, we have several guests that would like to make special announcements. I'm going to allow them to come at this time and give us three minutes. I'm going to ask that Mr. Charles Crawford, who wants to talk about the Muskogee Homecoming Parade, come and give us your name and address. You'll have your name. You'll have three minutes.
Hello. Pleased to be here. I've talked to most of you in person and most of you either on the phone or through email. And I would like to offer the formal invitation to the council, the mayor's office, and all attendees to join the Muskogee Homecoming Parade, October the 6th. On, that's a Friday. And it's at 2:30 PM. It will be start time. And if I may, would you help me with the... Everybody has a copy of the flyer. And the individual emails that each of you received has the parade route, the start and stop points, and the unloading points. The parade design itself is identical to the Azalea Festival and the rodeo. This is because this is being done in conjunction with Parson Recreation.
Awesome.
I like it.
Awesome.
The crew from the board and superintendent of Muskogee High School. And we would like to present that to the council this evening as a gift.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we hope that you can all be in attendance. We will have, we have access to the city facilities at the farmer's market, the civic center, and along where the food truck, food truck night is, in that green area that's between Broadway. And so that'll also be a staging event for where some of the kids can be and some of their organizations will be as well. Now, we'll also have booths and tables available for council members, or the mayor's office, or any city officials to sit and hand out whatever they like. And then we'll have locations on maps showing where each of these booths will be and what the content will be at each.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I'm going to invite the council to take a photo behind the banner at this time.
Okay.
Counselor. Madison Shoemaker is here to give us an announcement about Indigenous Peoples' Day. I'm going to invite her to come to the microphone. Give us your name. You'll have three minutes.
OCO Hinchjay, hello. My name is Madison Shoemaker, and I'm the president of the Muskogee Oklahoma Native American Association, also known as Mona. Our organization aims to preserve the culture of all native people throughout our Muskogee community. It's important for us to care for each other within the community through volunteerism and donations. Recently, we were able to provide dinner for the Murro Indian Children's Home, and we hope to do that again and much more in our community in the future. So today, I am here to invite the mayor, city council, and all of Muskogee to this year's Indigenous Peoples' Day. This year, we're going to be hosting Indigenous Peoples' Day activities at the MLK Center. We'll also be having a gospel sing, worship day, the Sunday before, at the Muskogee Indian Community Center across from the mall, which will feature four services and, as well as a gospel sing. We're also having lunch and dinner provided. I brought copies of this year's flyers and the details of the events, but I want to highlight some of the events that might interest you on October 9th, like our recently announced keynote speaker, Muskogee's own Dwan Morris. We will also have a 50-50 raffle, free giveaways, $50 in prizes, a Kid Zone, and a local indigenous artist exhibition. So, and those of you that are wondering already, yes, there will be Indian tacos. It's $10 for a meal and a drink, and you'll be supporting our organization to help support our community. So thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and I hope to see everyone on October 9th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Loyda Salmon, and if I've mispronounced your name, I certainly do apologize, is here to make announcement on behalf of the Red Cross and their smoke alarms. If you come to the microphone, give us your name. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Loyda. I'm the executive director for South, Central Southeast Oklahoma, and very proud to be here in the Muskogee area. We've actually increased a lot of our activity here. We have about 20 new volunteers, so very happy to report that. I just wanted to share with you really quick that on October 28th, we are going to do a smoke alarm installation here in Muskogee. On your desk there, you should have had a couple of things handed out to you. This first one, I just wanted to point out, this is something that we can share with our neighbors. We have it both in English and Spanish. There is not a cost. We just need to know if that's something that they're interested in. And we are working in conjunction with the fire department on this, and happy to be a part of the installation. So if anyone is interested in helping install, they can reach out to us. There's another one that says a growing movement like this. And this is where you can sign up to be a partner with us and help us install that day. We're going to do it from 8:30 to 1:00. And last year, Muskogee, we had quite a few fires here, and want to make sure that we are taking care of our neighbors. So thank you very much for your time, and looking forward to being here.
Thank you very much, ma'am. We appreciate you. Lastly, we have Ms. Lisa Hickman. If you'll come to the microphone, give us your name. You'll have three minutes.
Alrighty, well, thank you so much for allowing me to come back again and speak once again. I'd like to say I love everything that we're doing right now in Muskogee. I love the activities. I love the events that we continue to continue to put out. I can't mention everything, but I got to tell you, everything in depot green, beautiful. The Halloween activities, the Muskogee High School parade information we just seen. Everything is great. The streets are looking good. And once again, I'm just here to give some compliments. So kudos to everybody for doing such a fantastic job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate that very much. We have now called to order the regularly scheduled meeting for the Muskogee Municipal Authority for September 25th, 2023. Let us stand for the invocation and flag salute. Let us pray. Lord, we thank you so much for this day. Father, I pray your blessing upon us as a council. Lord, that we will believe the one aspect of our constitution that talks about popular sovereignty. Father, that we will execute and do its best on behalf of the residents. Although popular or not, if it's for their benefit, that's the direction we move. And I pray, oh God, that through the presence of your Holy Spirit, you give us the courage to do that and believe and trust in you, that all will be well with our souls when we do its right. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let us look to the flag. Attention, salute, flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Here.
Patrick Cale.
Here.
Thank you. Item number one.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of August 28th, 2023, or take other necessary action.
Those said minutes appear not packing on tonight. Do we have a correction to the minutes or a motion to approve as presented?
Approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the minutes. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Here.
Yes. Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number two.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending August 31st, 2023, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, you have before you the claims from the Muskogee Municipal Authority. Staff recommends approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from the body on the claims, any corrections, or do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. That concludes that meeting. We will now call to order the meeting of the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority for September 25th, 2023. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hoos. Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Here.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Here.
Patrick Cale.
Here.
Thank you. Item number one.
Sorry, I went too far. Consider approval of MRA minutes of August 28th, 2023, or take other necessary action.
Said minutes appear not packing on tonight. Do we have any corrections to the minutes or a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the minutes. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number two.
Consider approval of MRA claims for August 19th, 2023, through September 15th, 2023, or take other necessary action.
We will now hear the claims. From...
You do see the claims here before you. I'm happy to answer any questions that I may know of, but I do believe that they're accurate in regard to the claims of the MRA.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Do we have any discussion about the claims or a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second on the claims. Further discussion. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number three.
Consider approval of Joint Resolution Number 2945 between the City of Muskogee and the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority, providing for the transfer of Economic Development Operations Management and Funds, as well as for the transfer of the Civic Center Operations Management and Enterprise Fund from the MRA to the City of Muskogee, or take other necessary action.
Councilors Reynolds and Cale.
I'll start first here. This is something we started back during our retreat. It's, we had started a while back, and we had changed the MRA and set it up to do a little bit more than it was currently doing. We lost our economic development guy at the time, and we have not gone back and done that. We did vote to have staff prepare this. And with that, I would like to ask Patrick.
Mr. Cale.
Yes. This agenda item not only transfers the Civic Center operations and the Economic Development Director, it also affords for a committee to be put together that would... The committee would be our Economic Development Committee from the city council. Three members, and we'll later put together that committee and agree to the rules of that committee. I'd like to, after talking to a few council members, and with guidance from our mayor, I'd like to attach this language to my motion to require staff to come back 30 days with an economic development policy that outlines the budget, expenses, incentives, and how the advisory committees are appointed, if at all, based on other cities' best practices. The economic development policy can be based on existing policies already in place in other cities, if that's the way it is. Having said that, I'd like to add that and make a motion that we vote on it.
Is that your motion?
As amended. Yes, as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number three. Any discussion from the body?
So let me understand. Are you saying that they will come back in 30 days, or this decision we made today would be the decision to transfer?
Correct.
Which one is correct?
We're transferring today, but the direction from the city or through our direction will be in 30 days, at which time we can agree or not agree, or add to, or take away from.
On the policy?
Yes.
So we're making a motion and a second and voting as amended, based on your additional comments?
Yes. And the amendment is just adding this...
I take that as direction to staff. Counselor Cale.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions from the body?
Yes, ma'am. Let me be recognized.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just so I get an understanding here. Once this is transferred back into the city, all of you guys understand the city of government that you're under, there's no way possible for council to really have any say, if I can say it like that. I think this day is really a sad day for the City of Muskogee to exclude yourself from any authority that was given to you as a trustee of the MRA. I think many may not understand their role as a council person and a trustee. There's two separate roles, but yet one body of people. And so when you read the language that's presented to us today, it cuts all of that out. So it doesn't reflect in what we're reading today to do as what Mr. Councilman Cale has suggested. I think that if you understand your bylaws and your constitution, your charter, once everything is transferred over, I just don't know how much input that you have from that point forward, especially with a director of any sort. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Further comments? We have a motion and a second.
I would just like to add, you know, I hear what Councilman Cale was saying on the 30 days. I wish we could put the horse in front of the cart and see what that looks like. One of the things that I'm concerned about is in this transfer today, that there would be some things that would be left out. I had some conversations as well over the weekend, and I would really like to see some of our joint and partners in the community come to the table to help us in this decision of what economic development looks like and what the future of economic development is. I believe that that is one of our greatest keys to the future, is how we address and go into economic development. We have some partners out there that get money from the city council that's also in the business of economic development and recruitment to the City of Muskogee. And it would like, it would be nice to have that kind of conversation before we made such a decision. I would have liked to see the Civic Center as a different piece. You know, the Civic Center speaks for itself as far as what it's doing and accomplishing. And I do understand why these two are tied together, you know? My belief or disbelief on how we should address the Civic Center is tied to one vote, two for one. And so with that being said, you know, I'm all for 100% in seeing the economic development program move forward, but I'm kind of on pause right now. And I wish we could have waited to see what this plan looks like, since we're saying it's coming back in 30 days. I would like to see the plan first to make sure that we're all on the same page.
May I be recognized?
Ms. Boyati Craig?
I agree with what Deputy Mayor has said. I never like coming back 30 days and looking at something that should have been presented upfront. I also do not agree that the Civic Center and Economic Development Operations should be one item. We should be voting on that separately. We talk about a three-member proposal, a three-member board proposal. Is that not what the MRA does now? Perhaps I'm a little bit confused. We have people that are sitting on the MRA, and it's my understanding that that's what they do. So I'm a little bit confused on that. So I would like to just table this, if that's the word, until we take a look at the outline, the budget committee, the members, et cetera. And then I would like to separate it out.
Mayor, could I?
Yes.
Be recognized? I feel that the council does have oversight. We've got oversight over the manager, and we have, we're the ones that make decisions as to move right or left, or forward or backwards. As a practical matter, the MRA concept sounds really neat. As a practical matter, that concept has not worked. It was a debacle when the MRA was over the last Economic Development Director. It's not worked well with the Civic Center at all. These people need to be managed. And on a day-to-day basis, they can be managed through the city and its staff and the manager. On a day-to-day basis, council cannot be there to manage the manager at the Civic Center, to manage the Economic Development Director. It's, we're not capable. And I don't mean we're not capable because we're not smart enough. There's some folks up here that are well capable of doing it, managing, if they were retired, if they had six or eight hours a day. None of us have it, as far as I can tell. We've got our own businesses and responsibilities to tend to and to take on an obligation, because it sounds neat and nifty, when in reality, it does not work. We've already tried it. It didn't work then, and it, nothing's going to change it. We're all the same people that we have been and will be. So I hate to say this, but the MRA concept overlooking and managing people is a failed, it's a concept. Not only that, let's say we did have a couple of counselors who could take six or eight hours a day to manage these folks. What happens when they step down? Or maybe get beat in an election? Who's going to be ready to take over? Who's going to be ready to take charge? Who can afford the time to give to manage these people? I think that it should never have left the city. I think it needs to stay with the city where these people can be managed, can be tended to, can have questions answered, and so forth and so on.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one more question?
Yes, ma'am.
My question is, who managed the city manager right now? Who managed the city manager right now? Anybody manage the city manager right now? That's the question that I have. And then the other thing, is this dissolving the MRA? Is that what you would like to see? The MRA has no function, correct, Mr. Miller?
So this does not dissolve the MRA?
Why not? There would be no functions for it, so why wouldn't this be a dissolved matter? Because from, if I listen to my counselor here, the MRA don't serve a purpose, correct?
The MRA does serve a purpose.
Okay, that's what I thought.
It currently has several, carries several notes for indebtedness for the city. And this would not have any impact on those at all. This is strictly...
It's strictly a flow-through account that takes on the debt for the city?
This is strictly, as the council instructed staff to do, to present agenda items that took whatever you did in November of '21 and to undo it. So it just takes us back two years in time for the MRA's purposes.
I wasn't asking you that, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
I just asked you the purpose of the MRA and if it was needed or not. That's really what I wanted to know. And if it is needed, what is its purpose?
So it's needed as a public trust. The MRA can take on debt, and the city cannot take on debt as a municipality. So the MRA is a financing mechanism that the city uses to take on debt in, I'm trying to think of the most recent one, but that's one of the...
Alone, right? Is the Von Cage correct?
You've stumped me with that one, counselor, about which is the latest bit of debt that this body has assumed.
And then when you get to the Civic Center, do the MRA play any role with that entity there?
Is that a question for me, ma'am?
Yes, sir. I'm just talking to the manager.
I wanted to make sure I understood. If we turn back the clock two years, the MRA acts as the entity that holds alcohol license for the Civic Center, and it would continue to do so under, by turning back the clock two years, it would do what it did two years ago and continue to hold that license.
Thank you, sir.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
No.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
No.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
No.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. The item passes. Item number four.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 2946, amending the bylaws of the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority, or take other necessary action.
Counselors Reynolds and Cale.
My understanding is this is a resolution that we need to pass as well. Since we passed item number three, we need to also take item number four and vote yes.
To adopt a formal resolution, is that correct, Ms. Bowdenhammer?
Yes, that's correct.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution as aforementioned items have been discussed. Further discussion. Roll call. Sorry.
We're good.
Okay, roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
No.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
No.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
No.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number five.
Consider approval to accept a letter from the city manager of the City of Muskogee terminating the contract executed on November 8th, 2021, between the City of Muskogee and the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority, which transferred supervision of the Economic Development Program and funds from the City of Muskogee to the MRA, additionally waiving the 90-days' notice requirement for immediate termination of the contract, or take other necessary action.
Counselor Reynolds and Cale.
This is also an item that ties back to item number three. And since we voted yes on item number three, we need to also vote yes on item number four. With that said, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number five. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to inject here. I just have to ask Patrick Cale, Alex Reynolds, and Mike Miller, were there any private conversations that brought you guys to this conclusion where you are colluding together to give this department of the Civic Center to another for a monetary gain?
I'll answer that.
Yes, sir.
No.
Let it be on the record, please.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyadi Craig?
No.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy Hous?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
No.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
No.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. That adjourns that meeting. We will now call to order the Muskogee City Council Agenda for September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Here.
Jamie Stout?
Here.
Alex Reynolds?
Here.
Tracy McGee?
Here.
Tracy Hous?
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Here.
Pearl Ann Boyadi Craig?
Here.
Patrick Cale?
Here.
Thank you. We will now consider the approval of the minutes from the City Council Regular Session, August twenty-eighth, or take any necessary actions. Those items are in our minutes or in our packet as presented. Do we have any discussion on the minutes or a motion to approve?
For approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the minutes. Roll call.
Patrick Cale?
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyadi Craig?
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy Hous?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, the minutes are approved. We will now consider the consent agenda, which is items one through thirteen, with the exception of number five, which needs to be amended, which will be moved to the regular agenda. Are there any other discussion items that need to be moved, or do we have a motion as presented?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda as presented.
Could I ask a question on item number two? Is Tiger National Gas, gas-only or gas-electric?
I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not, can you repeat the question?
Is Tiger Gas, national gas, on item number two? Do they sell electric-only or gas-only or both?
To my knowledge, they are strictly a wholesaler of natural gas.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Patrick Cale?
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyadi Craig?
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy Hous?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes. Item number five.
Consider approval of City Council Policy One-Dash-Thirteen, Matching Grant Fund, in order to provide formal structure, policy, and procedures for use of matching grant funds within the City of Muskogee budget, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, council unanimously approved this policy at committee. Since then, it's come to light from one of the contractors of one of our trusts that it would be of interest to allow us to match tribal grants as well as state or federal grants. I agree entirely. And so what you have before you is an amended policy based off of that, allowing us to match tribal grants as well. With that being said, I think this does address all the issues that the council had raised previously and would recommend approval and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Do we have any conversation on item number five, or what is the pleasure of the body?
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, ma'am.
Mike Miller, can you please take us back to why this was brought in the first place? I know we had a communication luncheon on it. Can you, if you remember, why this was?
Yes, certainly. We adopted this fund. It was one of the first things that I tried to institute as a city manager in my budget, in the city budget, the budget that I presented and the counselors adopted it at that time, to allow us to take city funds and apply for state and federal grants, and now tribal as well. The idea being, we would take a city tax dollar and be able to leverage it and get a state or federal or tribal dollar. In some cases, we're able to get ten-to-one match. You'll see on an agenda item later today, a nine-to-one match. We use one dollar of city money and get nine dollars additional. We had not previously had such a fund, and so before any, before the city could apply for a grant, we had to figure out where can we do this? And we were potentially missing opportunities to leverage our money at nine or ten-to-one dollars because we didn't have this fund. So the council put that into place, and over time, there's been different uses of the fund. And so the council said, let's put those in writing how we're going to do this and stick to the traditional use to leverage the funds to bring in additional dollars to the community that wouldn't come here otherwise. So we did talk, and this mirrors the original intent and the intent expressed by council in committee and in other discussions. And so that's why it's before you today.
Okay, thank you, Mike. And could you, since this is on the agenda, could you get this council a report showing forth all parties that receive this matching grant and how much? Because I know it was brought before this council showing forth a particular entity receiving quite a bit of money. And I'm sure it was brought to my attention, it's more than them. So can you get us a report that would reflect that?
Absolutely.
And on the procedure, when it says tribal, it was also brought to my attention, even on the tribal, some, I guess you would call partners of tribal. Is that going to be accepted under this new procedure? So if it's not the tribal, you know, they have like they Entrepreneur Department that may match a grant? Is that going to be acceptable?
If it's a matching grant program, if there's a competitive grant, remember, this is for grants.
I understand.
And the council said, we don't, it's not necessarily for fundraising, it's for grants. If there's a competitive grant program related to a tribe, I would assume that would be...
Now, so we want to make sure that any grant, it'd be fine, right?
Well, if it's a grant program from a tribe, a state, or federal entity, then I think that would apply.
Thank you.
Further discussion? I think that because of this slight modification, the motion should be to approve as presented. Do we have such motion?
Move for approval.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Patrick Cale?
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyadi Craig?
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy Hous?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
No.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. Item number fourteen.
Receive report from Main Street Muskogee regarding their Main Street Muskogee Downtown Grant, and take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, Mayor, members of council. We do have an agreement with Main Street Muskogee to manage our downtown grant that we received through the City Muskogee Foundation. Members of that organization are here to make that presentation about how that grant is being administered, and we're happy to hear that from Courtney and Dylan and whoever else from the organization they'd like to speak.
Courtney, thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, council members. And so I would like to update you on the progress of the downtown grant. As you can see here, the original categories, we have the Downtown Business Improvement, which is a facade grant, which originally had a hundred thousand dollars in that category. The Business Incentive, which had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Beautification, which had thirty thousand. Green Space Infrastructure and Amenities, which had sixty-five thousand. And Sidewalks and Lighting, which had a hundred and eighty thousand. In our facade projects, we have one project, which is Blue Light and Storage. This is the before. In this, they have done window repairs and replaced tiles with black stucco. In the after, this is it completed. You can see that it's been repaired on the exterior. Kid's space, here's the before also. In this building project, they updated the building color, window treatments, added new signage, and there were some additional added items on this building. Here's the concept that they presented to us. And then this is the after. KW Premier Properties, which is right across the street from this building, they will be adding window boxes on the second floor, new window treatments in that tan area around the windows. And they're going to add awning similar to others in downtown that are made of black metal. Here's that concept as well. Here's three additional projects that are in the works. Queen City and Co., they are adding awning similar to other styles along Main Street, which are the black metal. They are going to repaint their brick to a darker tone red as opposed to the fire station red it currently has. And they are going to update signage for Queen City similar to what the Festive Nest has and American Pie, which is the blade signage. MJ's Downtown Tavern, they are going to add a new lighted sign over their door. Electrical installation on the exterior so they can hook up the lighted sign. They're going to add a new front door that swings the correct way, and they're also going to repaint their metal awning. And then Watson's Chop House on Third, they're going to be adding twenty-seven additional windows to their new property. In the Business Incentive projects, we have the Meeting Place. They have, they're hoping to redo the flooring of the eighteen-hundred-square-foot space, create walls for the event space, furnish the space including tables and chairs, updating lighting fixtures, and additional upgrades to the bathroom, electrical outlets, and signage. Many of this has been done. So here's a little after picture. Watson's Chop House on Third, they also applied for our Business Incentive Grant Program, and they are going to have roof repairs. This is the exterior of that building that they just recently purchased. We also wanted to add some interior concepts that they've provided with us. So this is some of the looks, and then these as well. In our beautification category, we have planters, which were moved, painted, and planted by volunteers. Thanks to two nonprofits, we have transformed the look of downtown. Here is a current picture of what's growing in some of the planters, and here's some of the volunteers that painted them earlier this spring. Here's also our planting day that we had. And then in the bumpouts, this is also a volunteer-led project, which was planted the same day. If you drive up and down Broadway, you can see the transformation. Christmas lighting, we have a proposed project plan of lighting the viaduct for Christmas in a similar color palette as the rest of downtown, which would be in the whites and blues. And then also adding four custom ten-foot-tall lighted guitars, similar to the style that we have around town, but they will be larger. We would like to seek approval from the city to install lights and also work together with that project. These would be some unique pieces to our community that you can't see anywhere else. In the Green Space Infrastructure and Amenities category, we have added picnic tables to the green space on Broadway. This empty lot has been transformed, and this has been a wonderful investment and are used daily. And they're also used during events as well, as you can see with our Food Truck Tuesdays. We're also adding three pet waste stations. They should be placed in downtown next month sometime, but they have been purchased. So this is going to help with the waste problem that we have on our streets. And in our sidewalks, sidewalks and lighting category, we've done one sidewalk repair. This was in front of Our Vest Bank and Square Deal Music. It's been repaired, and it's going to have the new style of sidewalks that will be put into downtown. And the sidewalk repairs will help to improve the walking conditions. We are actively looking at future projects and sidewalk repairs in downtown. And then we also just wanted to add some Main Street updates, just so you guys can see a little bit more of what we're doing. We've recently moved into a new office, which is located at four thirty-seven West Broadway. This is our current list of board members. We have some new names and faces on our board this year, so we're very excited about that. We just wanted to input some more pictures of Food Truck Tuesdays. It was a successful event that happened May through August, every single Tuesday in the green space, which brought off the community. And then we also wanted to share our upcoming events. Today, we had our Downtown Business Awards, and if any of you were able to attend, it was a lovely day. We're going to be having our Downtown Muskogee Halloween Bonanza on October twenty-eighth, and there is a rain day also planned for this event. We do have Pink Friday, which is a shop local event coming up on November seventeenth. We have Small Business Saturday on November twenty-fifth, which is also a shop local event. We have our Christmas Window Display Contest, which is popular downtown. This is going to happen November twenty-fifth through December eleventh. And then our Downtown Muskogee Christmas Parade, which is going to be December eleventh, and the theme is a candy cane Christmas this year. We also wanted to share a little bit about our Downtown Ambassador. If any of you have seen Michelle, she rides around in her golf cart and her vest. She's more than likely to say hi to anyone that she sees. She gives directions to visitors that visit us in our downtown area. She waters, trims, and cares for the bumpouts and planters. She cleans up the street, sidewalks, and alley debris. She removes at least three garbage bags daily of trash that are put in downtown. And she also makes reports to the Citizen Action Center to aid in the city. We also wanted to talk about the Paul Bruin Historic Revitalization Grant. Muskogee was awarded this grant this year. It's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the National Park Service. This grant will help develop subgrant programs and select individual projects in our community for physical preservation projects that will contribute to economic vitality. This is eligible for any national historic property in the city. But in downtown, we have two National Register of Historic Places, districts that are eligible for this grant, and multiple individually listed properties. Those two districts are the Muskogee Depot and Freight District and the Prestatehood Commercial District are the two properties located downtown. So we're very excited about that. And then I just want to say thank you so much for your time, and if anyone has any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Courtney. We also want to acknowledge Mr. Dylan Luck, who's still the chairman of Muskogee Main Street. Thank you very much for being here as well, as well as your board members who are here. Why don't you just wave your hand so that you can be properly acknowledged? All of those Main Street board members and audience, thank you for your diligence, your labor. Do we have any questions from the body for Ms. Courtney?
Good job.
Good job.
So much.
Good job.
Very impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you. This item does not require any action, as it was just a report. Item number fifteen.
Hold a public hearing and take action on the approval of Ordinance Number Forty-Two Hundred A to rezone property located at five hundred South Thirty-Second Street from C-one Local Commercial to C-two General Commercial. And if approved, authorize staff to revise the official zoning map of the city to reflect said change or take other necessary action.
We will now open the public hearing. Mr. King?
Good evening, Mayor and council. So this is the item we saw at Public Works two weeks ago. This is for what used to be easy-pay used cars on South Thirty-Second Street coming into town due to the Highway sixty-nine, sixty-four expansion in that area by ODOT. It'll be taking up some of their frontage, and so they can no longer operate as used car dealership. And would like to rezone from C-one Local Commercial to C-two General Commercial so they can continue to pursue their business in tire sales and tire maintenance. If you have any questions, I will take those questions. Staff recommends approval.
We don't have anyone signed to speak to this item. We will now close the public hearing. What is the question from the body, or do we have a motion to proceed?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number fifteen. Further discussion? Roll call.
Patrick Cale?
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyadi Craig?
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy Hous?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. We will strike number sixteen, as it must appear before committee before it comes to this body. We will go to item number seventeen.
Hold a public hearing and take action on the approval of Ordinance Number Forty-Two Oh Eight A to rezone property located at thirty-one oh three South Cherokee from R-one Single Family Residential to C-one Local Commercial. And if approved, authorize staff to revise the official zoning map of the city to reflect said change or take other necessary action.
We will now open the public hearing. Mr. King?
So we also saw this item two weeks ago at Public Works. So this is a property that is a t-shirt shop, graphic retailer, and their location was zoned, R-one Single Family, for some reason. They've been operating a commercial business there, and they're looking to sell the property for commercial purposes. That area is in compliance with the Future Land Use Map for Commercial Zoning, and so they can list it for sale as commercial property. It needs to be rezoned by this body to commercial. So I'll take any questions, and staff recommends approval.
We have no members signed up to speak to this item on tonight. I will close the public hearing. Do we have any questions for Mr. King, or what's the pleasure of the body?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number seventeen. Roll call.
Patrick Cale?
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyadi Craig?
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy Hous?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number eighteen.
Consider approval of ordinance number forty-two-oh-five-A for a franchise agreement with Cox Communications to provide web-based video services in the city of Muskogee to its commercial customers or take other necessary action.
Ms. Bowden Hammer.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that was on Public Works and Finance Committee earlier this month, and again, this is not a cable ordinance. This is a web-based, video, web-based video service strictly for business customers. What that enables Cox to do is to download web video content, for example, for hotel conferences, so that's played at the hotel. This goes strictly to existing business customers. It is not a cable franchise. It is a franchise for web-based video services.
Thank you, Ms. Bowden Hammer. Do we have any questions on this item or a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number nineteen.
Consider approval of ordinance number forty-two-oh-six-A amending the City of Muskogee Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Two, Municipal Government Organization, Section two dash twenty-nine, Citizenship Participation Guidelines and Rules of Decorum, providing for repealer, severability, and setting an effective date.
Ms. Boyati Craig.
Yes, this item came up a little over a month ago. We had a citizen that signed up to speak that did not want to reveal her address, and of course, our ordinance required that the citizen provide their name, their address, uh, when they get up to publicly speak. We do have a form that the citizen fills out prior to coming before council, and that information is requested on that form, and we want that to stay the same. However, this, um, citizen was concerned about her safety, and in today's environment, of course, everything is available and can be found on this world wide web, but we want to make it a little bit harder for someone to find that information. So we recommend, um, that, and thanks to Katrina, she, um, has revised this for us, that when a citizen comes before the council, they will only have to give their name and not their address, and I recommend approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on that item. I just wanna be clear, that doesn't remove them from having to place it on the form.
No, it does not.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number twenty.
Consider approval of Joint Resolution Number twenty-nine forty-five between the City of Muskogee and the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority, providing for the transfer of the Economic Development Program and Funds, as well as the transfer of the Civic Center Operations Management and Enterprise Fund from the MRA to the City of Muskogee or take other necessary action.
Counselors Reynolds and Cale.
Uh, these are also, um, items that, since we passed, uh, number three in the MRA meeting, we would need to pass twenty through twenty-three, and that is my motion.
For item twenty.
For item twenty.
We have a motion on item twenty. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item twenty. Any discussion from the council? Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
No.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
No.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
No.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, item twenty passes. Item number twenty-one.
Consider approval of Resolution Number twenty-nine forty-six, amending the bylaws of the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority or take other necessary action.
Counselors Reynolds and Cale.
Uh, also, this is, uh, on the agenda. Uh, if you pass number twenty, we need to pass number twenty-one, and my motion is that we pass number, item number twenty-one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number twenty-one. Further discussion? Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
No.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
No.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
No.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, item number twenty-one passes. Item number twenty-two.
Consider approval of amended ordinance number forty-one ninety-eight-A, amending Chapter seventy-four, Taxation, Article Eight, Use Tax, by amending Section seventy-four-dash-two-thirty-seven, Economic Development Fund, repealing Section seventy-four-dash-two-thirty-seven, G-one-dash-three, removing the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority from managing economic development and associated funds for the City of Muskogee, creating a subcommittee, providing for repealer severability and setting an effective date, or take other necessary action.
Counselors Reynolds and Cale.
Um, this is also another item tagged on to the others, and with that, I would move for the approval of item twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number twenty-two. Further discussion? Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
No.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
No.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
No.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, item number twenty-two passes. Item number twenty-three.
Consider approval to authorize the City Manager of the City of Muskogee to execute a letter terminating the November eighth, twenty-twenty-one agreement between the City of Muskogee and the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority, which transferred management of the Economic Development Program and Funds from the City of Muskogee to the MRA, and waive the ninety days' notice requirement for immediate termination of the contract or take other necessary action.
Counselors Reynolds and Cale.
And this is our last item, number twenty-three, um, that we will need to clarify item three from the previous meeting, and with that, I move that we pass item number twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number twe, twenty-three. Further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, can I be recognized?
Yes, ma'am.
Just curious, who are we writing a letter to? Miss Mike Miller's writing a letter to himself, or he writing a letter to whom? Miss Curious?
If I, if I can answer that, I prepared the letter. It's a letter from the, the board members, the trustees of the MRA, or, I'm sorry, from the City Manager to MRA cancelling the contract.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Is it not the letter in our packet that's addressed to Mayor Coleman?
Yes, it is.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
No.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
No.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
No.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number twenty-four.
Consider approval to authorize the City Manager to negotiate and execute a contract for abatement services between the City of Muskogee and Be Sure Lawn and Landscape or take other necessary action.
Mr. King.
So this item comes for the council because a, we have two, uh, contracting services within the Planning and Community Development Department. One is for abatement, so that is when we get, we have a high weeds and grass or trash and debris case in code enforcement, and it's not been cleaned up, and the Public News and Review Committee finds that it's continued in violation of city code. We then provide that address to a contractor, and they go and clean it up and abide by certain contractual agreements between the city and the vendor. We were planning on going back out to bid for proposals back in June of twenty-twenty-three. Um, during that time, that is when I came on as a director, and some of that got pushed a little bit behind. Uh, the abatement services contractor did have a clause in his contract that allowed for a one-year automatic, automatic renewal, and so we exercised that renewal at that time, so we'd have more time to put together requests for proposals for abatement services at a later date. Uh, we put these requests for proposals out in the end of August, on August twenty-fifth. We have a ten-day period, and bids were due by September fifth at five P.M. close of business. We received three bids from Be Sure Lawn and Landscape, Citywide Property Maintenance, S. Smithy's Lawn and More. Uh, Be Sure Lawn and Landscape was the only company to provide a full and comprehensive and responsive bid, listing on everything we request proposal, um, requested, and the other two did not provide complete bids. And so, given that they were the most responsive and best bid, we have been choosing, choosing Be Sure Lawn and Landscape to execute our remaining contract, um, which will be effective, uh, December one, as our current contractor will still be with us through the end of November per its contract. I'll take any questions.
Mr. King, the contract starts December one. When will it end?
Um, for this year, it'll end on June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. King, or do we have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number twenty-four. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, item twenty-four passes. Item number twenty-five.
Consider approval to authorize the City Manager to negotiate and execute a contract for demolition services between the City of Muskogee and Five Star Demolition or take other necessary action.
Mr. King.
So this is our other contractual services that we have within the department. Their contract did expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, and then this body in July granted them a ninety-day extension through September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three. When we put this request out alongside our abatement request in August through September, we received two bids, one from American Demolition Site Services and one from Five Star Demolition. Uh, Five Star Demolition have the lowest and best bid, and before we have awarded the contract, Five Star Demolition, this contract will be effective October one, twenty-twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. King. Any questions on that item, or do we have a motion to proceed?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item twenty-five. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number twenty-six.
Consider approval to authorize the City Manager to negotiate and execute a contract between the City of Muskogee and Half Associates, Inc., for the completion of the City of Muskogee Comprehensive Plan Update or take other necessary action.
Mr. King.
Two weeks ago at Public Works, this item was for you guys at that time. You guys requested to review the plan, uh, which my office sent out, and that plan has also been attached in your agenda item packets. Uh, we are still looking for an approval so that we can authorize the City Manager to negotiate a contract with Half Associates so that we can do our comprehensive plan update. As a reminder, our comprehensive plan update, um, is a plan that usually is done every fifteen or twenty years. It's a plan with an end goal and an end site in mind with input from the staff and the community, with a large emphasis on what the community believes the city should be looking forward to in fifteen or twenty years. Many times and instances, these plans need to be updated before a new plan is enacted within twenty years because everything changes and we're not, not fault to change, and so sometimes we have to come back in ten years earlier or so and make an update that will relive, revive what the community wants to see out of their city in a defined future. And so this time, the staff does recommend that you approve the authorized City Manager to negotiate and execute a contract, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. King, for providing information as we requested. The only question I have, and I think I missed it somewhere in the, uh, attachment, the new comprehensive plan, what's the longevity once the new plan is completed? Because I know you had mentioned that we want to be certain that we keep up with time. So is the new plan a five-year plan, a ten-year plan, a twenty-year plan?
So typically, comprehensive plans are a fifteen- or twenty-year plan, and since we have not started working with the consultant yet, and we have not had any of the community meetings, there is not a defined plan, but I would say, um, we can comfortably call this the City of Muskogee twenty-forty plan.
So as we have those conversations, however, we can at some point say that we want a shorter term.
Oh, yes, of course. That's totally up to the community.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. King on this item, or do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number twenty-six. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number twenty-seven.
Consider approval to apply for, and if awarded, accept funds from the FEMA Cyber Security Grant for firewall upgrades as a subrecipient in the amount of up to forty thousand dollars, including four thousand dollars from the matching grant fund, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Cummings.
Mayor, Council, the state of Oklahoma, uh, Department of Homeland Security applied and received a FEMA grant directed towards fiber, cyber security, not only for the state, but also for subdivisions of the states such as cities, counties, uh, school districts, et cetera. We are able to apply as a subrecipient to help bolster our security because, as you know, cyber threats are growing. If you watch the news over the past few weeks, you will have noticed that Las Vegas was pretty much shut down because the two largest resorts, um, that owned most of the property along the strip were, uh, ransomed. They, they had ransomware, so they couldn't check people in, they couldn't run their casinos, et cetera. And locally, the city of Tulsa and Broken Arrow Public Schools were also victims of ransomware attacks. So in working, we worked diligently to try to keep these bad actors out, so when we we see the opportunity to help our security, then we go after it. So, that's what this is for, is to ask the state to give us some funds to, on this item, to update our firewall. It's getting a little aged. It still works well, but it's getting slow, so the newer technology will help us keep people out. I ask for the council to approve us to be able to apply and receive the funds if rewarded.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Do we have any comments for this item?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I just want to point this out. This is something that we are going to need to do anyway, but I applaud Mr. Cummings for going out to find additional money to help us do that without having to use our city taxpayer dollars to fund all of it.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any discussion further on item twenty-seven, or do we have a motion from the body?
Move for approval. I second it.
We have a motion and a second on item number twenty-seven. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number twenty-eight.
Consider approval to apply for, and if awarded, accept funds from the FEMA Cyber Security Grant for penetration testing as a subrecipient in the amount of up to forty thousand dollars, including four thousand dollars from the city's matching grant fund, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Cummings.
Yes, Mayor and council, this is another vital piece to this. Once we have security in place, and regardless of whether we are rewarded for the previous grant, we need to know what our vulnerabilities are, and this hires, we hire a company to come in, and they take a look and help us identify any holes in our security, and help us to patch those holes in order to help keep us safe, and I ask that you approve for this.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Do we have any questions from the body, or what's our pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number twenty-nine.
Consider approval of final payment to Vance Brothers in the amount of sixty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents for the Northwest Zone Microsurfacing, project number two-zero-two-two-zero-eight, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Rigley.
Yes, thank you. So, I have a PowerPoint that I'd like to go over to show some of the benefits of this project, and talk a little bit more about what we can expect to see. So, here's a budgetary breakdown of the zones. This is the north, east, and west, and you'll see that we still have a remaining amount to spend in the northwest zone. So, after we approve this agenda item here, we'll still have work to do. We still have contractors out there doing the milling overlay in the northwest and the southwest zone, and then we have subsequent projects to follow that we will plan after these two wrap up. And here's the same slide for the southwest zone. So, like I said, after these wrap up, we'll audit each zone to see what we have done and what we haven't done, and that will help us determine future projects. So, a review. Microseal is a thin layer of aggregate and oil that's laid over a street in average to above-average condition. This is done to elongate the life of the street and seal the imperfections in the street. It does provide a nice new look to the street when it's completed, but its primary focus is preservation of existing asphalt. So, microsealed streets were identified based on need according to a pavement condition index. The city street crews provided a leveling course on the majority of these streets. A leveling course is a thin overlay to ensure the microseal street is smooth and in good shape before receiving the microseal. Our environmental control crews went in front of these crews to cut back the tree canopy so that they could safely travel through the area. So, here's a picture of what a microseal might look like, and then I'll have some pictures of it in practice here shortly. So, the pros of this are it preserves the life of the street, it's an aesthetic improvement, and it's cost-effective, and it also provides a smooth street, and that has to do with the leveling course that we put on the street. So, we want to give it a good base to go on top of. So, if we don't provide that leveling course, the street's not exactly true. So, when you're driving down these streets, they may have a few imperfections. The microseal will smooth a lot of those out, but it doesn't make it perfect, and once again, this is about elongating the life of existing streets. So, doing a microseal allows us to be in more areas of town than if we were to do all of this in a milling overlay. And the ones that did not get a leveling course, they were in good shape on that pavement condition index that we talked about. So, here's a picture of the process. This is then microsealing on Seventh Street, so it's a rather large process, and here's a couple of more pictures. And here is Seventh Street after it was wrapped up. Here is Fourth Street, Martin Luther King Boulevard, and Kalamazoo, and there are plenty of other streets that were done, and I encourage you to drive around town and see them, because they're absolutely everywhere. We're very proud of it. So, some recognition. First, I'd like to thank the city council for your support in helping us get this project. The foundation, Vance Brothers, who is the contractor, the street committee, several members who are here, former members who are here, and the city street and environmental crews for their prep work that helped make this project go smoothly. And that slide will also be for item thirty as well. So, staff does recommend approval of final pay. The work was complete and satisfactory, and the northwest zone came in under budget due to some of that prep work that we did. It helped save some money to put to a future project.
Thank you, Mr. Rigley. Any questions on this item, or what's the will of the body?
I move for approval, and Avery, thank you, and thank you to the staff for making all this happen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item twenty-nine. Further discussion. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number thirty.
Consider approval of final payment to Vance Brothers in the amount of twenty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and twelve cents for the Southwest Zone Microsurfacing, project number two-zero-two-two-zero-four-zero, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Rigley.
Yes, this was a similar project in the southwest zone, and it was complete and satisfactory as well, and came in within the budget, and staff does recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Rigley. Do we have any questions on item number thirty? What's the pleasure of this body?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number thirty. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number thirty-one.
Consider approval of a request from Muskogee Public Schools to change the westbound one-way street on Denison Street between Ninth and Eleventh Streets to an eastbound one-way street on Denison Street from Ninth and Eleventh Streets, and take other necessary action.
Mr. Rigley.
So, as we stated, this was brought to us by Muskogee Public Schools, and Dan Hall brought this to us as a concern for some traffic stacking that was going on, and the way that the one-way is set up, it has traffic stacking into court, and Mr. Stewart and I went out there and observed this, and this is an accurate picture to what it looks like on any given day at pickup time for these kids. And according to Mr. Hall, if we were to flip that one-way street to the other direction, that would alleviate some of the stacking, and Public Works staff went out and investigated, and we do concur. So, this slide right here is how it's set up currently, and then this is how it would be set up upon approval. So, it's just flipping the one-way, and we think that this will be an improvement in the traffic in the area. So, staff does recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Rigley. Further discussion from this council? What is your pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number thirty-one. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number thirty-two.
Consider approval of the lowest and best bid from Ascend Construction for Grandview Park improvements for the base bid amount of one million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-three cents, with one hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-four cents in alternates, for a total of one million, five hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-seven cents, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Wilkerson.
Mayor and council members, on August thirty-first, we opened bids. We had two bidders in your packet. We have a recommendation of approval from our design consultants on the project recommending Ascend, although Ascend has not done work for our park department, but they are a Tulsa company, and they have done work for our design consultant, so they are recommending them to do the work. At that time, the bids came in higher than what we had money, and we were waiting. We had made a request to the National Park Service to add additional funds to this project, because we knew we were going to need them. They have since given us four hundred and eighty thousand dollars additional money in match to provide for the project. That gives us just enough money to accept the base bid and all the alternates, so we can move forward with the total project. So, we recommend that we move forward with Ascend.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkerson. Comments on item number thirty-two?
Thank you, Mark, for all your hard work on this. I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number thirty-three.
Consider approval of the appointment of Melissa Nistley to the Muskogee City County Port Authority and Muskogee City County Trust Port Authority to serve a four-year term, filling the expired term of Marlon Coleman, expiring term of Marlon Coleman, beginning October one, twenty-twenty-three, and ending September thirty, twenty-twenty-seven, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Hilton Flannery.
Yes, this is my agenda item, and Melissa Nistley, I've gotten to know through the past few years from working with her on various events here in Muskogee. She's a financial advisor currently at Edward Jones. She's actually owned a retail business before, a store, and I think she would be a great asset to the Port Authority Board.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
We have a motion on number thirty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number thirty-four.
Consider approval of the appointment of Darryl Russell to the Muskogee City County Port Authority and Muskogee City County Trust Port Authority to serve a four-year term, filling the expired term of Corey Sisson, beginning October one, twenty-twenty-three, and ending September thirty, twenty-twenty-seven, or take other necessary action.
Dr. Who's.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to recommend Darryl Russell to the Muskogee City County Port Authority and Muskogee County Trust Port Authority. Darryl's an active member of our community. He serves on several boards. He's very qualified. I think that his knowledge and background will help this board tremendously, so it's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number thirty-four. Any discussion? Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.